Commission meeting of October 22nd will be led by the pledge by Commissioner Barth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff. Reminder to silence your cell phones and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly. And if you need a listening device, Robert has those. With that, we'll start with routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to move number seventeen in front of item number ten.
We have a motion to move seventeen in front of ten.
Second.
There's a second. Any questions? We'll vote on the amendment first. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Now, a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of October fifteenth, 2013.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and seven cents.
Paid bills.
Second.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We don't want to pay any bills today?
I motioned and Jeff seconded it.
Jeff motioned and seconded it.
You guys were in.
She made a motion and I seconded it.
At the same time.
Really?
Yeah.
You guys watched too much of the Viking game last night.
They did.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number four are reports. The Register of Deeds official statement of revenues collected for September 2013 has been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Is there a motion to approve routine action?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Good morning, Carrie.
Item B is consider a motion to set Minnehaw County health and dental insurance premium rates for 2014. Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. This is the time of year that we go ahead and talk to you about. Okay. Apparently now I'm ready. This is the time of year that we talk to you about our health insurance, what it's been doing over the past year, what we expect for next year. And we talk about dental as well as we plan for premium increases for the upcoming year. As a reminder, this is not an exact science. It's dependent upon a lot of factors like the claims experience that we've had for the past year, what we're anticipating for the next year, administrative fee increases, the enrollment levels, how many people we have on our plan, so a variety of factors. What we do is we estimate what we're expecting for the future, look at the enrollment levels for the future, and set the level of premium we would need to cover our expenses. This year, we have some additional expenses that we know we're facing with healthcare reform. So a summary of what you're looking at here, this is the annual increases of costs since 2008. 2013, of course, isn't finished yet, but if you were to annualize our costs, we're expecting about 2.5 million in health claim costs alone. So an increase, but if you go back to 2009, it's not an experienced level that we haven't had in the past. I'd also say that because our overall enrollment level is up, our per employee per cost are still sitting fairly good. Administrative fee increases, we're in the last year of our contract, so we know for next year that we're expecting about a 4% increase in that area. Stop loss gives us every year, we're expecting a 25% increase. In fact, we know that's what we'll have for stop loss fees for next year. Prescription, another big increase, but that's often tied to our catastrophic claims, so that's not unexpected. And our pharmacy admin fees have gone up as well. So what we're thinking for next year is we're going to have about $4 million of costs. There's some additional expenses that you'll see that you haven't seen in the past that I've added for analysis for next year. The first is our stop loss specific aggregate fee. This is a method that we implemented this current year to help keep our actual monthly premiums down. What it means is after we've had employees hit the specific level of $100,000, that we'll continue to pick up an additional $100,000 on an aggregate basis. So I'm gambling that we may hit that, as we have or likely will this year. So instead of just leaving that out and sort of letting it be left to fate, I'm going to estimate that we're going to hit it. The other two things are related to healthcare reform. We know that we're paying a patient-centered outcomes research institute fee. It'll be $2 per covered life next year, so we know that'll be additional $1,500 of the cost, not a large amount. The reinsurance fee, that was another issue. That's going to be $63 per life. And we've talked about that since we knew that that fee was going to be assessed. We knew it was going to be there, but it's not a small amount. It's about $48,000 for next year. So knowing that, we're expecting about 4.2 total costs in order to cover that with revenue based on our current enrollment levels. That would mean 4%. Now, the only thing that you don't see here that we also took into consideration are some health plan design-related changes. Some of those will increase our fees, but frankly, not by much. We knew that we'd have no annual lifetime maximum for this upcoming year. We knew that we would have more dependence on the plan regardless if they have insurance through the employer. And that's just going to be a very nominal cost for us. The other things that we're recommending for next year is a small change in our definition of spouse. And we're going to make a change for the age limit for when we would cover single shots. Again, nothing that we would expect would have a big increase on our costs. What that actually means for employees, 4%, sounds like the potential could go up. I would say just two things about that. You'll recall, we haven't had an increase for the last two years at all. We've been sitting fairly well. Also, when you apply that 4% increase, it means an additional $3.24 for employee-only coverage, $646 for E-plus-one, and $9.05 for family coverage. So that's per pay period. But the other thing that I think is noteworthy about all of that is notice that our total enrollment is up about 3% from last year. So that might be part of the migration that we're expecting. It might be just because we've been able to keep our costs down where other people are maybe going up a little bit higher than we have. So overall, things are still sitting fairly well on the health side.
Thank you, Carrie. Does anyone have any questions for Carrie on the medical side? Do you want to go right into the dental and we can do them both together?
You bet. Dental, same type of analysis on what we're expecting. The gray column that, I'm just going to leave it like this so people can see what other gray column that you're missing is just our admin fees. We're expecting another $50 per month increase there, and that won't go up for the next year. The bottom line here, this is obviously a little bit easier analysis to make. The bottom line here is we're expecting about $330,000 of dental costs for 2014. In order to cover that, we would need a 7% increase. Again, 7% might make you kind of go, oh, that's a nice size increase. But our dental rates are fairly low comparing to other organizations. And again, what that amounts to is $3.24 for employee-only coverage, $646 for E-plus-one, and $9... Oh, that's, that's healthy. That's healthy. I thought that seemed a little high. Here we go. $0.37 for employee-only, $0.47 for E-plus-one, and a dollar for family. One small note on this. Currently, how our E-plus-one coverage levels were set, I'm recommending a small change, so that's more of a ratio of two to our employee-only coverage. So that's only going to be a 4.3% increase for the E-plus-one. But on overall, 7% for employee-only, 7% for family, and the 4.3% for the E-plus-one.
Thank you. Any questions for Carrie? No questions? Out-of-pocket costs, so to speak, for an employee that's got single coverage is?
$1,500.
Okay.
Yep. $500 deductible, $1,500 out-of-pocket maximum. So no changes in that area. We're still maintaining our grandfathered status. But you'll recall that we made some health plan design changes before healthcare reform even hit. And all of those wellness benefits were a part of our plan then and still continue to be. So even if we were to lose our grandfathered status, we are already meeting the vast, vast majority of those healthcare reform-related items.
Other questions for Carrie?
Well, you touched on an interesting point, and that's that if you are actually going to start shopping, for example, on the exchange, you have to make sure you're comparing the apples to the oranges because you may just be looking at that rate and thinking that you're saving some money. However, you've got to look at your deductibles. You have to really put pencil and paper and think about before you make that switch because obviously, we have different rates for deductibles. And whatever's being offered on the exchange, you need to look at that information. So I encourage people to be shrewd shoppers.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? If not, could we have a motion?
Well, oh.
Go ahead.
Have you talked about the health changes?
Thank you. That's a, oh, I'm sorry, maybe I missed.
The health plan changes for 2014. That last slide.
Yep, we talked a little bit about those.
I'm sorry. Number five, the clinical trials.
Yes.
Now, what, I'm assuming that's where somebody's doing a research project and probably got a federal grant on it.
Yep.
So what costs are going to be incurred by our insured?
That's a good question. And just for the audience's sake, I included a summary in the briefing memo of all the different changes that are going to be occurring with our health plan. Again, that's the lifetime dollar limit goes away, pre-existing conditions exclusions goes away with healthcare reform. Dependents can stay on our plan up to age 26 regardless. Talked about the shingles vaccine, talked about the definition spouse. You're right, the only one I failed to mention was the routine patient care cost. That is, again, just routine patient care cost for clinical trials. So we're not taking on the cost of the clinical trial itself. Just if they have a doctor's visit or if they have a routine x-ray or test that's ordered as part of that. So to answer your question, very, very minimal of any impact to the plan. Less than 1% is what our actuaries are telling us.
Other questions?
Once again, and that's because the clinical trial itself, whether it's being administered through Sanford or whatever, teaching hospital, they're going to be bearing the cost of that. So we want to make sure that, once again, our plan isn't subsidizing some clinical trial, that they already have a federal grant to go ahead and complete, correct?
Partially that. And the other thing, too, is to operate in good faith, we want to make sure that we're covering costs that are proven to take care of the medical condition. So that's why we typically want to pick up the clinical trial costs themselves.
Good points. Do we have a motion or any other questions?
Second. We got a motion?
No, we do not.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve the changes in the healthcare costs and the dental cost. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, aye, and let's say unanimous vote, four-zero, five-zero, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you very much.
There are no application for abatements today. The next item are notice and request. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a request for proposals for inmate medical services with infirmary sobering center services and detoxification services for Minnehaw County.
Anyone to speak to that?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to authorize the county pub auditor to publish notice.
Commissioner. Commissioners made a motion and a second, but.
Too late, Sheriff.
I think we'll wait to hear from Mike.
Ken picked a perfect time to leave.
He did, didn't he?
I think he'll probably be back shortly, but we've spent a lot of time working with Carol and Ken. I mean, countless meetings to come up with this final proposal, so Ken, welcome back. So I will, I will thank the amount of time that went in from staff, from the county on this. Warden Gromer, Michelle, and again, Ken and Carol. This is a sweeping change to the way we manage people in custody who are intoxicated. As opposed to going to the detox, they will now be within a sobering center environment, within an infirmary in the jail. Just something that we don't have today. So it's a total shift. And then the detox will actually be people who are in treatment programs and trying to change their lifestyle as opposed to people who may not want to change their lifestyle. So Ken, I don't know if you want to talk to the RFP at all.
Well, the RFP is consistent with the discussions that this commission had during budget hearing to move towards this concept of an infirmary and really kind of moving the intake area that we have down in the jail for folks who are intoxicated. And again, moving towards detox being a function of folks that are really in that treatment, IBC processes. So that's what it's consistent with. The RFP is designed where one contractor can bid for both, but if they choose not to, that's acceptable as well. However, one key component of this is that because of the expanded medical needs that we're asking for with the infirmary and moving the, some of the intake programs upstairs to that second floor, is that that contractor will be responsible for the medical provision of things that happen within a greatly reduced bed count over at detox. It's our intention to hold these open until November 22nd. There is a series of onsite visits that need to take place with the contractors who are interested in coming and doing this. And we hope to open those proposals on November 22nd. So a month from today is when we hope to get those back. And then, of course, at that time, we'll review those and bring those back to you for a negotiation contract with the proposer that we're recommending that we accept. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Again, this is consistent with the discussions that took place at budget hearings and moving forward with those.
Thank you, Sheriff and Mike and Ken. And anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Barth?
Ken, do we have reason to believe that there'll be a few bidders on this?
And that, I think with, that's one of the reasons why we've restructured the RFP from what you maybe initially saw. And that's because we wanted to make sure that we incorporated as many potential responders as we could to this. You know, you will recall that the last time we did this back in '09, when we moved to a contract model, we had two proposals that were submitted. And one of the things I think that we need to be cognizant of as we move forward is our size. I mean, we're, we're right. You know, we're not really up there with some of the big players in the country that run county systems that may be attractive. But we're not small either. So we're right at that, right at that verge. And that plays a big part of, I think, of how many people will respond. But I'm reasonably confident that we're going to get some competitive proposals in that with the RFP that's been constructed, so.
Commissioner Kelly?
A couple of things. First, I hope you'll change that typo on the cover page before you send it out, but.
If there is, we'll change it.
They can submit two sep, they can submit a bid for detox only or for jail only. Is that correct?
They can. But again, you need to remember.
Is it going to include the sobering center though, the jail? It includes the sobering center?
Yes, it does.
And that's the new facility, that's the new construction we're going to do upstairs?
Correct.
And then the detox is where we know the detox is today?
Part of the detox, correct.
And that'll be split into, to an infirmary type? And then what's the other half?
The other half right now, and that, as you will recall, up in the detox center right now, there's two separate areas with an observation, two rooms in the observation area in the middle.
But they're really not separated by anything, are they?
No. But two observation rooms plus one side, that'll be the conversion to the infirmary slash sobering center model. And then, of course, we have plans for next year to expand the sobering center up in that area as well, to add more space for that. That's the plan at this juncture. The other side of the detox wing, that'll be strictly for what we see as a lower number of beds that will be actual detox-related. So both things will start off initially in that same space that are up there right now.
Is this set up so, I mean, this might be for Kirsten, but is this set up so that if somebody comes in and bids the whole package, we can give any preference to that?
We have the right, of course, to accept any proposal and then to, again, enter into any kind of contract modifications that we wish to do in that, in the proposal. But again, I want you to remember, key to this is that if a firm is just interested in doing the, in not matting the detox, you know, there is still a requirement on how this RFP is structured that because of the medical oversight that we're providing up in that area, and that's an enhanced medical component that doesn't exist now, and that they will be responsible as well for at least providing that component in a detox.
And will a detox still be under DSS then regulations?
Yes. And that, I mean, we are still, it is still our intent to run an accredited detox program. And that in this new mod, we may not see the numbers flow through there as in past, you know, but we still plan on doing that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Ken, will patients coming in with blood alcohol over .4 still be just taken to hospital as opposed to life-to-life care?
Right now, I'm not prepared to answer that right now, Commissioner. That's really kind of the protocols in place, and that's not what I'm prepared to talk about today with that, so.
Any other questions? Ken, you and I talked about this yesterday, and first of all, I'm glad that you made the proposal half the size as it was before.
That was strongly recommended by both the sheriff's department and the consultants.
Yeah. 153 pages is quite a few. My concern a little bit at this point, and I'm going to ask you for your opinion again, but, you know, this is a significant change, and we're doing this in about a month's period of time. Do you think that's enough time for the vendors to be able to look at this, come in and do a review, and still put a proposal together?
I do.
Okay.
And that I do think that, you know, it's an aggressive timeframe.
Yep.
And that it really is. But there are folks in this industry and that who, they're used to that. You know, the key to us is, is, you know, and I think we need to be flexible as to when, you know, we will allow the transition to this thing. It may not happen right on January 1st. You know, it may, it may take, you know, January or February to get it in place. But I think we need, this is the right move to what we're trying to accomplish. And we just need to be flexible about those dates to get that implemented.
I think there is a date that's suggested, but it also says it's flexible.
Correct.
To March 1st or whatever. How long do you think it will take by the time we get the proposals back to make, I guess, reviews of the proposals to make a decision?
I think it's incumbent upon the folks that have been involved with drafting the RFP and have been intimately involved with this to jump on this quickly and that, and review. But I, you know, we cannot, we really need to put people on notice here. I would say within a couple of weeks after accepting and reviewing the proposals and bringing a recommendation to you for acceptance.
Okay. Sounds good. Other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Yes.
There is a motion and a second to authorize the publish of the inmate medical services and the sobering center services and the detox services for Minnehaw County. Any other questions, comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. And before we go on, for all those that worked so hard in putting this together, we do appreciate your input and frankly, your time involvement because I know how much labor you have put into it, so thank you.
Item B under notices and requests is to authorize the county auditor to post a notice of hearing to consider a supplement from the general fund to the safe home budget in the amount of $3,153. And a supplement from the general fund to the sheriff budget in the amount of $42,188.29.
To authorize the publication.
It's a posting.
A post-hosting.
Second.
Any questions about the supplement? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no planning and zoning notices today, and there are no petition for compromise of lien. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
Anyone who'd like to make a comment about any item that is not on the agenda? We'd welcome your input now. Anyone appears not, so we'll go into regular business.
The first item is to consider a motion to accept the donation of one Lexmark Prevail Pro 705 color printer and declare property as surplus and authorize donation of the printer to the helpline center. Ken McCarland.
Commissioners, this was an item that came to us at the request of a private individual who wanted to donate this particular printer to the county. And that as we took a look at the printer and that it was not compatible with some of our IT needs and support requirements that we would have for the item, and that we notified that individual that it was, it would not meet our needs, but we wanted to keep consistent with their desire that it go to an organization that could get some use out of it. And that, and so what we have today before you, we made a couple of phone calls. And the helpline center and that here in Sioux Falls can make use of this particular item. So we would ask for a motion for you to accept the donation, declare it a surplus, and authorize the donation of the property, the helpline. And that, and I will remind you, that does require a unanimous vote of the commission to do so.
That's my motion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Is there a second? Motion and a second to accept the donation. Any questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
The next item is a public hearing to consider drainage permit application number 13-70 from Ed Orndahl to conduct agricultural draining in section 23, Township 104 North, Range 52 West in Buffalo Township. Scott Anderson.
Yes, thank you. Today, I'm asking to have this item continued or deferred to the November 19th, 2013 meeting in order for staff to have some additional time to prepare a report. I have contacted, I believe, all of the parties and let them know that it was my intention to continue this, so that would be my request today.
Is there?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion and a second. Just in case, is there anybody here that came because they thought they were going to make testimony? If not, I don't think we have a problem moving this back to November 19th. We have motion and a second to defer to November 19th. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
The next item is to consider a motion to approve preliminary plan number 13-03, Green Valley LLP with conditions. The property is located in the northeast quarter section 21, Township 1012 North, Range 50 West. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. David Gibbon of Design and Development Engineers has submitted a preliminary plan for Green Valley LLP. And the preliminary plan requires county board action. This item went before the planning commission on September 23rd, 2013, and it was recommended approval unanimously with two conditions. And those conditions were, number one, that the, that prior to today's meeting, the applicant prepared an erosion control plan to be submitted for review and approval. And number two, that also they, prior to today's meeting, the applicant prepared a preliminary drainage and grading plan for review and approval, and they have done that. So this is the property that is being, a revised preliminary plan has been submitted. And just to show you, this is basically the plan. They, they. They, they originally had a preliminary plan that was approved in 2006, and now they are changing that to basically take out a connector road that was located between the two cul-de-sacs, Haley and Dominic. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but the applicant is also here, and they have met all the conditions of approval, so the plat is ready for your consideration.
Any questions of Scott?
Is this the, is this the area where we had the difficulty with the auto salvage?
Yes.
Is that, that road?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott or for the owner?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
The next item is a presentation of the Sioux Empire Fair Association's report on the 2013 Sioux Empire Fair. Scott Wick.
Good morning. Scott Wick, CEO of the WH Lion Fairgrounds. I'd like to introduce some board members we have present. We have Steve Monk as the board chair, Sam Fisher, past chair, Joe Beal, board member, full-time volunteer, also my immediate boss and wife, and Julie Hammer is our executive assistant. Let's go right down. This first slide is a picture of a bulldogger. Unfortunately, he was up on Sunday after all the rain. We had a PRCA rodeo the first, or the last weekend, it was the first rodeo we've had out there as far as a pro show in quite a number of years, so that was exciting and well-attended on Saturday. It did rain Saturday night, and it rained a lot later on in the evening, which made it for a very muddy performance on Sunday, but it was still very well-attended. Fair attendance, fair attendance was up 5.8% over last year. We attribute a lot of that to the weather and also our new format for totally free concerts with paid gate admission. It was $7 to get into the complex, and then you could attend any of the events and concerts in the grandstand, including the rodeo for free, except for the first Saturday, that was a paid concert. We had very mild temperatures in the 80s for the first 10 days of August, which is unheard of, and that definitely helped out greatly with attendance. The picture on the bottom, if I can adjust this a little bit, that's, we had about 5,000 young people that were staged outside of the grandstand area waiting to get into the Hunter Hayes concert that opened up that Friday evening.
Are there any boys in that crowd?
They couldn't find their way to the front. Again, we had many contributions from businesses and volunteers, Aggie Appreciation Day sponsors, many sponsors overall, sponsorship was up. Again, many volunteers throughout the year that came out and painted and helped fix barns and buildings and different service groups, and the volunteerism just keeps rising and rising. We have the same family that's come out since the year Joe and I took over, and they come out every year. It's kind of an annual deal for mom and her daughters, and they just, they just keep painting. They make their way around, and now they're starting to repaint things they started back in '11. We did the Miracle Midway again. This year, we partnered up with the Boys and Girls Club, and we didn't have as many come through as we did when we did Children's Miracle Network, but we were still able to give back $1,126 to the Boys and Girls Club of the Sioux Empire. So that was a good promotion, and hopefully we can do it another year with them and get more coverage out there, get more of the coupons out there, and, and keep continuing to give back to some other nonprofits. Many, many upgrades at the fairgrounds from last year. Of course, the largest one was the Nordson Johnson families donated the new multipurpose building. We've had asphalt in the parking lot for the multipurpose building, added asphalt in the grandstand area. We moved and replaced the asphalt in front of the fine arts building. All that asphalt was either donated by private entities, or the city did do the fine arts area and has done some other work out there as well. The updated air exchange system, that was a capital improvement piece that you guys approved for us to do, and it, it's a huge improvement of the air quality inside the expo building, not only for people that are there showing, but also for the livestock. And people notice that, and it's a very, very much needed improvement, and we thank you for that. We removed all the stoops and replaced doors at the expo building. We've got an updated water system in the expo building, overhead door that was repaired with a new opener, new roof on the train depot, new fence in Pioneer Lane. We lost a whole bunch of trees in April, and we were able to get, get trees from Split Rock Nursery at a discounted price, so we did replace those trees, and hopefully they will take root and thrive. We continue to work on barns and show arenas. We put up a new Budweiser beer shed to replace the bridal wood beer garden, and this new shed is inside the grandstand area, and we put it there, so when they're done with the concert, they can just walk out of the grandstand, be right to where the next musical event takes place, and it also keeps those that are partaking in adult beverage away from the main entrance where families come in and out of. We added additional sewer to some campsites. We had to transform around a pole that was leaning, we, that we didn't feel was safe, so we had that moved to the ground, and that pole has been eliminated. We had improvements to various water hookups, and we had 20 picnic tables donated by the Hoo-Hoo Club. I forgot to advance that. Somebody's doing everything twice. On to exhibitors. 370 total head for FFA and Open Livestock Shows, 350 for 4H, 1,032 art horticulture and floriculture exhibits, 877 4H static exhibits. We continue to educate the community through Pioneer Lane, Old McDonald's Farm, Safety Village has the safe house, power, fire, and safety activities, along with Barnyard Review. South Dakota Corn growers had their interactive trailer there again this year, many livestock and horse shows, cooking demonstrations, Gem and Mineral Society, art exhibits, the model train, folks, Arizona Mobile Mammoth was out, and there's demonstrations about the society of created anarchism. Two-year extended fair. Again, the temps were in the low to mid 80s for most of the fair, that's unheard of in August. Now, everybody says, you know, it's all about success, and your business is about location, but we have a perfect location, but you couple that with perfect weather, and it's the perfect storm. We did have rain and lightning that shut the carnival down on the second Saturday night, but we had record concert attendance with our free format, and the rodeo was very well-attended too. Attendance at the rodeo was four or five times what we had for a monster truck pull or a, or a truck and tractor pull. Fair vendors, we had 103 outside vendor spaces were rented from 55 different vendors, wide selection of food, 126 indoor spaces were rented in the expo building with 84 different vendor stands, and we continue to have Santa Claus and the community stage in the expo building as well. We had more rides than last year again. The Murphy Brothers swapped out some different rides they thought would do better. Comet 2 roller coaster was here again, and we continued to do specials, Mega Pass, Super Pass specials, pay one price, get in the gate all week and ride the rides. That also got you into the concerts. Family entertainment this year, some notable ones, we had Latte Dogs, the winners of America's Got Talent, very big attraction, there'd be about 500 or more at the, at that showing three times a day, so they were great to have along. Again, Santa Claus was back. We had Double Vision was here last year. We brought in Six Appeal. Sherwin-Litten hasn't been around for, well, he's been around a long time, but he hasn't been at the fair for a while, so he was, he was there this year, and again, Barnyard Now to the money side of things. As you can see, there's expenses that we break down for just entertainment for you, so you can see where and how, how expensive it is to bring in some of these acts. And entertainment encompasses not only paying the act, but it's anything that's associated with that entertainment, whether it's the stagehands or running the stage, or the roof and lights, insurance, security, and all those different areas. So we spent a total of 647,000 on entertainment between the grandstand, ground entertainment, front porch, bands, and the beer shed. Premiums are what we pay out to those that exhibit, come and exhibit animals or different things, because that is also entertainment for others as well. So for all expenses for the fair, we had in entertainment 651,000, administrative 63,000, grounds, admissions, and vendors 108. Advertising promotion, we spent almost 103,000. Competitive exhibits and horse shows 47,000, beverage and concessions 151,000, arts, horticulture, FFA and 4H 13,000, for a total of expenses of $1,138,101. Fair revenue, entertainment's 130,740. Now, on the other slide, we had a very large number for total expense of entertainment. The entertainment cost is the, really the only one that's easy to track because of just the way we're set up and the influx of people in and out of the grandstand. They may come in and buy a beverage or food. Can we say that they're there for the concert or not? It's hard to tell. We, we only had the one paid concert, and it was 130,740, $130,740 of the tickets. Admissions camping miscellaneous 795,000, carnival 262,000, competitive exhibits 156,000, beverage and concession 290,000, sponsors and other contributors 123,000, total revenue For a very nice fair net income of 321,286. Now, entertain any questions? Again, this is another picture of the 5,000 that were waiting. I think there's one guy in there, Commissioner Kelly, but there was about 5,000 kids that were staged there. There was people that were there from 6:30 in the morning waiting to get in, and they were very, very well-behaved, great group. We ran concessions out there for them, so they would have water and Gatorade and pop, but they were, they were just a perfect group, no issues with that whatsoever. We were very, very fortunate to have two country artists in our week of the fair that were number one and number three on the chart, so that helped out, you know, in a huge way for attendance for not only the carnival, but the concerts. To have 12,000 people in our facility was pretty impressive and amazing, and went very smoothly.
Awesome. Dick?
I've got three questions, if I may. First, the premium seat, don't you sell premium seats on the concerts?
No, this year was 100% free with paid gate admission.
And then, how's Murphy doing versus the, the one before, as far as revenues?
Oh, they're doing, they're doing much better. They have many, many more rides, and they have, in their list of rides, they can bring in and exchange and do things, and the, you know, roller coaster's a big hit, but they're, they're doing very well. They're pleased with how things are going, being the new guy in town and a new format for an extended fair.
Are they still contributing to your advertising group?
Yes. They, they put $25,000 towards our advertising every fair.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What percentage of your annual revenue does the fair represent? Is that half, or is it more than half?
It's more than half right now.
Okay, and are you, you know, this year, is this going to be no ice in the expo building?
We have one more year of ice.
Commissioner Heiberg?
Maybe you could just comment on what our next big event coming up is. Obviously, the fair is our biggest event of the year, but we do do a lot of other things. So what's coming up?
The next biggest event we'll have coming up will be Cindy's Farm Show. That's the second largest event we have at the, on the facility, and then after that, the next largest event will probably be Rib Fest. We are hosting Rib Fest next year, and we're in negotiations with SMG, Terry Torclison, and hopefully the city is receptive to making it a permanent home for Rib Fest.
Other questions?
I mean, Cindy makes a good point. We are a year-round facility with a ton of events that come in. We have a National Junior Galvay Show that's coming in next year. We just had the National Fireworks Association was out in September with a big shoot, so we're getting more and more events all the time, more and more people are inquiring, we're more involved with the CVB with Sioux Falls, and with our economic impact study, we're bringing in a little over $23 million to Sioux Falls and the surrounding area.
Commissioner?
And one more question. Is the Nordson Johnson building open and available for rent at this point?
It is open and available for rent. There's been a couple events in there, the food giveaway, obviously, every Friday, and then we are, we've got a couple other groups that want to look at it as on a, on a weekly basis of using it potentially a couple times a week.
Other comments? Commissioner Pecus?
What's the gate fee again?
$7. 70, yeah, $7 for adults, $2 for kids. Still cheaper than movie.
Other questions? I would just add that it's amazing, over the period of time I've been here, the turnaround that you guys have accomplished, and for, I think, all of us up here and for your team of people, you've done an incredible job with not only the staff, but the volunteers who contribute, and the sponsors, and the positive image that you created, and we wish you continued success and absolutely a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
I think Steve Monk might have a comment.
Steve? You'll need to identify yourself, even if you've been here before.
Steve Monk, Chair of the Sioux Empire Fair Board Association, and to kind of ride along with what you, you mentioned, Gerald, is that there's a few years ago, we came before you and asked to extend our contract. We also asked for a loan to help get things going and keep them going, and with some, some hesitation with that, those both were approved. But at that time, we did indicate that we felt with the changes we had in mind, the personnel and management that we had in mind for, to replace that, what we had before, that we indicated to you that we could make this a very successful event. And so, we would like to thank you, as the commissioners, for kind of taking that leap of faith to help us along that route, and we're on a route that we feel very good about. We've always felt that we had the, the organization and, well, since the changes, that we have the right management and the organization in place, so that the only real variable we had is the weather that we don't have control of, so that if the weather was good, we could have a very successful event. So, once again, thank you for your support that you provided to allow us to get where we're at today, and we will only continue to grow from here, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll just remind people that the one thing I still remember is the fact that when we went through some of these changes, that Scott and Joe managed this thing for a short period of time for free.
One year.
I'm sure it felt like longer than a year, but without that, some of these other pieces would not have been put into place, so your dedication to make that happen, and thank you for reminding me it was a year, it wouldn't have been as easy to do what we've done, you've done, and we're very appreciative of that dedication, so thank you so much. Any other comments? If not?
The next item is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and the South Dakota Department of Health, Office of Public Health Preparedness for Mass Fatalities Training Grant, Lynda Young.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lynda Young with Emergency Management. As you know, Minnehaw County Emergency Management and the County Coroner's Office are working on development of a mass fatalities plan, and then we are also in the process of developing specs or an RFP for a mass fatalities trailer. Along with that, our group, that also includes professionals from the city of Sioux Falls, the state of South Dakota Health Department, and others are also working on a training event. In front of you, you've got a, or there's a grant for $10,000 from the State Department of Health. That'll be used to put on several different training events in the next six to eight weeks. And I'll, the first one is a FEMA Mass Fatalities Class to be held. Actually, we're going to do this, the first class is already filled up, so this is for a class in December on the 17th and 18th, and this really goes through the FEMA protocols for mass fatalities response with that. And then, the other thing that, the other class that we're going to have is a, we're going to bring some instructors in from the NTSB and hold a class on December 16th. It would be a NTSB instructor, the county coroner, Dr. Snell, and then others, just to discuss how the NTSB interacts with local, state, and other responders in the event of a mass fatality. the event of a mass fatalities occurrence within our community. So, uh, once again, the grant, uh, like I said, will pay for the associated expenses with both of these classes, not only the instructor fees, but any fees, uh, that we might have with the classroom area. And then, uh, we're also able to provide, uh, refreshments to keep those students in-house during that time, so we can get more, uh, bang for our buck with instructor time. So, uh, be happy to answer any questions, uh, relating to the grant and/or the, uh, training events that we're gonna have in the next several months.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
Um, do we have that trailer yet that...
Dr. Snell's been a little busy the last couple weeks, so we're about ninety-eight percent done with the, the specs or the RFP. We just gotta meet, and we're meeting on next Monday, the twenty-eighth, to finalize that. And then we'll come back to the Commission for the regular bid process, because we expect it to be over the bid limit, and then try to get that done before the end of the year. So, the short answer is no, I just gave a long answer.
Commissioner Kelly?
These, uh, training deals, are they open to anybody? Are we gonna get a multi-county or state people in there?
Yeah, um, we've been, uh, working, uh, one of the members on our, uh, team is Doug Nahava from the coroners, or excuse me, from the, um, from the funeral home directors, uh, him and Myron, uh, they're working it on their end. Uh, the county coroner, Dr. Snell, is working it on his end. Uh, the State Department of Health is getting those other people that are, uh, coming from their area, and then we're working at, uh, emergency management, fire, rescue, EMS, and law enforcement. So, um, as I indicated, we do have one other class that's here, and that's, uh, November sixth and seventh, and that one's already full with forty people, a classroom one. Um, this one here, on the sixteenth, we have a hundred and eighty people, so we hope to get, uh, that, you know, close to that amount, so we can get everybody in. And then, the class previous to this one is already half-full, so we're seeing good results as far as people from not only the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County, but from across the region that are, uh, looking to attend this training.
Any other questions? If not, we need a motion.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second to, uh, approve the, uh, agreement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thanks, and if any of you wanna sign up for, especially the one that might be interesting is the one on the sixteenth of December, uh, both the coroner and I will be there with the NTSB instructor, let me know, and we'll get you to sign up for that. And, um, I think if you're, we tried to get the same cake that he had at his opening of the coroner's office, they don't make that cake anymore, um, if you were there. But thank you, Commissioners, have a good day.
Thank you.
Item fourteen is to authorize the chairman to sign notice of grant award in the amount of sixty thousand dollars from the South Dakota Department of Corrections, RFP number two zero one four, DMC dash zero one, disproportionate minority contact grant. Erin Serska.
Thank you for that lovely intro, Cindy.
You're welcome.
I'm Erin Serska, JDAI Coordinator, and what I'm asking for today is authorization to sign our notice of award for our disproportionate minority contact DMC grant. Uh, we wanna get going on this project with your permission to sign it. Authorization, we can get going on it.
Any questions for Erin? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Say aye. We have a motion and a second to approve the grant. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item fifteen is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and Volunteers of America Dakotas for disproportionate minority contact manager services. Erin Serska.
Good morning. Uh, part of the grant that you just approved the notice award for, um, is to contract out DMC manager services. Uh, this person will be key in carrying out the work plan established by the work group and, uh, working on getting trainings available for our community. We are looking at, as you can tell, contracting with Volunteers of America for this particular service, and with authorization of this contract, uh, we can move forward to getting this person on board.
Any questions for Erin? Is there a motion? So move. Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, agreement with VOA for the minority contract manager services. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Erin.
Item sixteen is consider a motion to appoint Richard Calamine, Daniel Alexander, and James Zwieb to the Minnehaw County Surplus Property Appraisal Board. Kyle Helsett.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helsett, Director of Equalization. Normally, there's a three-person board that conducts the appraisals of any surplus property or reclaimed property or whatever may come up. Uh, we've had one of the members become ill, so at this time, it's, uh, turned into a very good opportunity to reappoint a board and add a new person onto it. And those three people, again, are Dick Calamine, who used to be the Director of Equalization, Dan Alexander, who worked for the city and also was with the city assessor's office, and ex-commissioner Jim Zwieb. They are a pretty good board.
Thank you, Kyle. Anybody have any comments? Commissioner Barth?
So Kyle, they'll, uh, appraise the, uh, properties that we've taken in, in tax situations?
Tax, yes.
And so then, uh, the auditor's office auctions them?
That's correct.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, County Surplus Property Appraisal Board. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
The next item is consider a motion to approve change order number one for a decrease of a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-five cents to the contract with TNR Construction for Project MC one four two, CONC dash thirteen, restoration and concrete joint repair on County Highway one forty-two, from Powerhouse Road to South Dakota Highway eleven. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Schultz, Senior Project Engineer, Highway Department. The agenda item before you is obviously a change order. It's a, basically authorizes us to make final payment. Um, the biggest decrease was removing the shoulder work from the contract because the shoulders had degraded, like we needed something else, and it wasn't covered in the contract. There was also just some field changes, you know, small items get added and subtracted in the course of the contract, and so, um, the change order isn't exactly what Schedule A from the original contract was, but it's close. Any questions about anything to do with approval?
Any questions for, uh, Shannon this morning about the change order? No questions? Uh, any motion?
Motion to approve the change order for a decrease in the contract cost.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change order of a decrease of a hundred and eighteen, eight twenty-six, thirty-five. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just as a point of order, the final payment then to the contractor will be made soon after today, and that amount will be three hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports this morning?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
Um, the museum board met, and, uh, we're talking about, obviously, moving forward on the collection facility, and I understand that, uh, Ken has gotten a draft MOU with the city and sent it on to, uh, our, uh, museum director. Um, the board, the museum board is interested in, in having us move forward and decide on the source of our county contribution and get it lined up, you know, whether we're going to, where we're gonna find those funds. They'd also like to, uh, begin again to work with an architect to get, uh, spiff up the existing plans, and then they'd like to move forward with, uh, selling the land so they have the cash, uh, resources that, uh, the private contribution, uh, will enable us to get. So they really want us to start moving forward. I think they'll be, uh, perhaps coming to, to us next week with an agenda. I see, uh, Ken is moving up, and we have Bill here now.
Well, one thing, and that, um, in the draft MOU that I prepared, and I know it's under review, and it needs to be reviewed by some of the city folks too for, uh, some potential changes, but the way I structured the MOU is to make sure that both the city and the county have the latitude and the means to determine how they would, you know, bring their own pots of money to the table, and that, so that's part of the MOU to make that decision, and that, uh, once that agreement is signed. And also, uh, we've made allowances, um, excuse me, in the MOU, that the county would be the lead person to, to do the sale of the land. So those, I think some of those things that you're addressing, Commissioner, are in fact addressed in the MOU and can proceed once that document is agreed to, and once any changes or modifications are made to the document and approved by the city and the county, then it becomes an administrative function, uh, that both of the entities can do. And then again, you know, then you can, uh, sign the timeline to get those things done once that MOU is, is agreed, agreed upon. So, I mean, we're doing some bond refinancing right now, and that, uh, and that schedule, I think is scheduled for sometime in...
December?
Yeah, and that, so we're, we're getting close on that, but, um, I think the, the MOU is really the key, and approval of the MOU at a joint meeting by the bodies is really key to pushing those things along, so, um, you know, as soon as we can get the MOU in its final form and approved, I think we'll be in good shape.
Any other questions?
Well, Bill's coming up.
I got a question on Jeff, 'cause I, and maybe...
Uh, Jeff?
Me.
Okay.
Jeff and Bill, but my, my question is that, we told them they're gonna get the money from us, that we've got third ninety-seven thousand, or whatever it is in the budget. What's our concern on how we do it?
Well, I think that, uh, you know, to talk in, say, baseball terms, uh, we haven't gotten across home plate yet, you know? It's been a long haul, taking, uh, you know, eight to ten years. Now we're on third base, but we're not gonna be done until we cut the ribbon, and, uh, we, we're not gonna be done until we get into score at home. And right now, that, we cannot relax, we've gotta keep, uh, the process moving forward. It's not going to just go forward on its own without, uh, attention to these details, like the agreement with the city, like the, like the final, uh, drawings, uh, et cetera, like selling that, that land where the private contribution will come from. So we, we, we still have to keep slogging ahead, uh, moving this project forward.
I'm not sure the museum board should be telling us how, you know, we gotta tell them how we're gonna finance it. We've made an agreement with, we told them when they're gonna get the money.
They, they just want us to decide on the source of the contribution and, and, and try to move forward. We can't wait until next July to decide if we're going to start sooner.
Mr. Hoskins, any comments?
I was gonna just say that...
You need to identify yourself.
Uh, Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. Uh, Ken's done a lot of work pulling together a draft document, I think based upon the Health and Human Services Building MOU. Kirsten and I are meeting later this week to go over and make sure that language in that document's consistent with the joint cooperative agreement that already exists for the operation of the museum. A survey of that five acres is underway, should be completed in early November, so, uh, there, there are things moving ahead. Of course, the, the most desirable thing would be to also somehow do design work, uh, only because I'd like to see us did it as soon in twenty-fourteen as possible to get the best possible price, but, uh, getting the agreement in place is probably the top priority.
I'd say it's more than a priority.
Yeah.
It's the acquirment of us, yeah.
I mean, either that's gotta come, or this isn't gonna happen, till the city signs that MOU.
I think we're all on the same page, it's just, uh, how fast you're running laps right now, so.
Slogging forward.
Okay. Uh, any other liaison reports? If not, uh, we'll go to new business. Just one item of new business, uh, yesterday got a call from, um, uh, I can't think of the guy that's in charge of the Transportation Committee for the city, and see...
Sam.
Sam, thank you. Sam Triblock, who is putting together a, a group of individuals to try to solve and discuss some of the issues that the, the metropolitan area, if you will, is facing with, uh, transportation, and he would like, uh, someone from the county to be included in that conversation. So, if there's someone who is interested in, uh, being part of that, we would like to have a commissioner involved and, um, maybe even have someone from, uh, planning and zoning involved, if possible, so. Anybody volunteer at this point, or...
When would they be meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I don't think they've put together a schedule. I think that's yet to be decided. I think their first meeting is November sixth, and then they'll decide from that point who and what, when and where and why.
Well, I would be willing to assist in that, I guess.
Awesome. Appreciate that, Jeff. I will let Sam know that. Any other new business items? Any old business?
Commissioner Kelly?
We got a email from, from, uh, the auditor's office regarding this refunding, twelve and a half million or whatever it was. What is that? What are we refunding? Is it the jail deal, or...
There's a series of bonds, not just one.
The auditor could answer that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Auditor's not here. The auditor's not here.
And I didn't see the email, but we're refunding the two thousand and four series of bonds, um, and that will generate some dollars, and payments will be the same period of time as the two thousand and four issue, um, it was just at a different interest rate.
Okay, and the purpose, obviously, is 'cause it's a much lower interest rate?
Correct, correct.
What, what kind of, there we are.
We don't know yet. I, I don't know what those are, but Bob is here, and he could probably talk to that.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Lipton downstairs there. I heard the, I heard part of the question, but I ran up here, Commissioner Kelly, so if you could reiterate your, your...
I was just interested in what, uh, what bonds are, I know this originally started with the jail bond, is, is that, but there's others in this too?
It's the two thousand and four jail, uh, series that we refunded for this amount.
This is something we've been talking about for about over a year now, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Everything's, uh, going quite smoothly with it. Uh, you know, a while back, the bond market was climbing up at a pretty good rate, but, uh, a while ago, Ben Bernanke came out and said that the government would keep buying bonds, and the bond, the interest rates dropped off again, so by sheer happenstance, we're gonna, we're gonna lock out on this, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. You can jog back down. Or have a seat, too. Any other, uh, old business? Any old business? Shannon?
Good morning again. Commissioner Shannon Schultz, County Highway Department, Transportation. Uh, we had a meeting last week with, uh, all of the townships, uh, regarding the sign replacement program, DOT, hundred percent funded by the DOT, and I just wanted to say it was very well attended. All the townships were here. Uh, it was about an hour and forty-five minute meeting. We had representation from the DOT, Doug Kinnenberg, uh, engineering supervisor, and there was just a lot of good discussion, and, uh, I guess I was proud of our team, Ultech being the engineers, and also Doug Kinnenberg, and, uh, even our own staff, and the townships asked great questions, and, um, I just wanted to give you that little news brief there, and also, you know, about two thousand and fifteen, we're gonna have a lot safer townships and county roads with the signing program, so.
Well, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
As you talk about that, one of the hot topics, obviously, is now one highway one hundred. Uh, is there county representation in that conversation?
There was during the environmental process, there was county participation, uh, but it's, it's, uh, it's a very clearly defined project in terms of limits, and as, you know, it's been such a long process, things evolve. Uh, DJ, Highway Superintendent, DJ Booth, he has approached the state to extend limits here and there, and tie an intersection here or there, and he's always told a firm no, because that would change the scope of the project, and then the environmental documents wouldn't be accurate anymore, so, uh, it, it's, like I said, it's a very defined project, and it's moving forward as, you know, the scope from many years ago. They're, uh, continuing to make progress as funding allows. I think the right of ways has been secured.
Okay.
Uh, question on that, Shannon. The city's agreed to take over maintenance of that highway once it's built, is that I understand?
I'm not privy to say.
I'm just wondering... I'm just wondering, I mean, even if it isn't the city limits, they'll be responsible for the...
I don't...
We aren't gonna get stuck with that, are we?
Oh, no, it's not gonna be a county highway. I do know that.
I guess that was a bottom-line question.
I think, if I remember reading the issues and being involved in it way back when as a city councilor, this is a city responsibility. So, but I think it would be good for the county to have some involvement, at least from an opinion standpoint, because until it's developed, it's a lot of county property, so to speak.
There will be a ripple effect. Perpendicular routes to those big corridor routes always experience growth. And so, as that gets built, our routes that come in, townships and city roads as well, they're gonna continue to see additional development. So, that is a good point.
Absolutely. I will make some conversation. Commissioner Pekus?
In my experience, when we were originally discussing this, I believe it was at UDC, the big county player is gonna be Lincoln County, because they have vast tracts of agricultural land that are not running perpendicular. It's actually crossing various tracts of land, basically from a, you know, a northeast to a southwest, to tie on to, I believe, the T-exit. And so, there's gonna be some challenges down in Lincoln County, but I don't think we're the, we're the big county player. I think Lincoln County.
I just remember conversations with railroad relocation issues and where that was gonna be placed, and all those issues that were completely inaccurate information at the time. And I think turned out very well, actually. But the issue is, is that it's important to have as many people discussing those and making sure that correct information's dispersed so that we know who's responsible for what.
If it be to the commission, I could arrange to have a representative from the DOT come to speak about Highway 100?
I think that would be a good idea at some point.
Okay. As a point of order, would that be a briefing memo, basically, kind of thing?
Well, if you want somebody here who'll make those arrangements, the DOT, you would have a briefing.
I think that would be good. When they're in town for other things, it's not like we're questioning their ability. I think we just need to be up to speed, because those are questions that I'm assuming we're gonna hear more about. So...
Very good. Will do.
Thank you. Thanks, Shannon. Other old business items? If not, we need to go into exec session for personnel matter.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion to go into exec session for personnel. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We'll give you...